Welcome to the December 14, 2022, meeting of the Lower Merion Board of Commissioners. We're starting a little bit late. I apologize. Well, I was going to apologize for that. The board was meeting in executive session earlier, but we came out to the boardroom, and it was a great social event with a lot of past colleagues and friends coming together for Ed Plucienic, who's here tonight, we're going to talk about in a little bit. And I hated to interrupt that, so we delayed it a little bit and let people catch up. At this point, we have three meetings this evening. We have the Police Committee, the Building and Planning Committee, and the Board of Commissioners meeting. Before we start, please silence your cell phone. There is equipment for the hearing impaired that's available if you need it. And if you're going to address the board later in the meeting, the microphones are here. They really need you to be close to them for us to hear you, so make sure you speak directly into those microphones. But before we start the regular business of the board tonight, as you can see on our agenda, we will be recognizing Ed Plucienic for his many, many years of service to the township. As you probably know, Ed served as a township engineer for 28 years. He sat with us here on the dais in this room, and well before I ever paid attention to anything in this township, where the boardroom was in a separate place in this building, he was on the dais there too. And so he, you know, it's really probably like one of the longest-serving people in this township. And so we're going to recognize him tonight on his retirement. And so the way we're going to do that, we thought about who would be appropriate, only to ask our Chair of the Public Works Committee, which is Commissioner McKeon, the Chair of Building and Planning, Commissioner Grimes, to join me in the oval. And Ed, if you and your wife Verna could join us as well? So as we were thinking about how to best recognize your service, Ed, and thinking about who best to speak to it, I've been president of this board for maybe 11 months now, and some people might say that's 11 months too long, but we were thinking about who would be really someone who could speak to your service. And we thought, who has served you both in public works, and who has been a commissioner when you were also township engineer? And we could think of no one better to speak to that than the current Director of Public Works, Paul McLahoney. So rather than me say things at this point, we're going to ask Paul to do that. Paul, you get this.
Thank you and good evening. So I had Ed write it. It was only 1,500 pages, but I narrowed it down to two, and it's in big print, so I can read it without my cheaters. But all kidding aside, how do you recognize 28 years of service to this community? Not a very easy task to be tasked with. But Ed, being an engineer, let's first look at it from a perspective that you surely will appreciate analytically. The numbers, just black and white. Ed has served under 53 commissioners in his stay here at the township in his serving this community. Ed has worked under three township managers in his time serving this community. Ed has served under 14 vice presidents of this Board of Commissioners. Ed has served under 12 presidents on this Board of Commissioners in his time here. I tried to put a number to the total dollars of CIP projects that Ed has had oversight over in the last 28 years. Wasn't able to do the math. The only thing I could put is that it was hundreds of thousands of dollars of infrastructure and guidance for this township and care for this township. Some of those noteworthy projects that have had influence or touch all of the people within this community under Ed's stewardship have been the Township Administration and public service building renovations and projects, the Kegel complex renovations and its expansions over the years, the two community pools, the ever-popular MS4 and PRP plans that continue to grow and go to meet the DEP needs. And my ears-
It does indeed. You haven't stopped that waterfall.
The fire station upgrades, the renovations to all the libraries, a very arduous task indeed, the Kimwood Trail, the replacement of all the orphaned bridges in Lower Merion Township, Penswood Bridge. Yes, finally. How many years was Penswood Bridge? But who's counting exactly? And one that I know that you take great pride in, and it's because of the engineering complexity, the Glenraffern Creek TMDL project, which you've received numerous awards for, and we receive numerous benefit in our community from that people have no inkling that it exists and what it does. If you guys will indulge me for a moment, though, as President Sinai indicated, I had the pleasure to serve with Ed in two different ways. I served as a commissioner on this board, and I also serve as the Director of Public Works. So if I can indulge you a little bit, a little bit about myself, in that first night that I was sworn in, we had appointments to committees. My wife was in the audience. They were doing a scorecard, kind of like a roundkeeper, and it was five committees, six committees, seven committees. But one of those committees was the start of my relationship with Ed. That committee was this ad hoc CIP committee, where Ed and I, Ed had to take on this new wet-behind-the-years-young-whipper-snapper commissioner, and work with him to go through the CIP, and keep me kind of focused, in line, give me guidance, and help me through that. So that was the beginning of my relationship with Ed. Throughout that time with Ed, he offered many great areas of advice and guidance to help me on my task as a commissioner, and always with a level of professionalism that couldn't be beat. Fast forward 10 years. I no longer am a commissioner. I've moved on. I've decided to go into the world of public works and public sector. Now I have a different dynamic with Ed. I'm now working side by side with him as a normal person, one of the select few. But with that, Ed's demeanor, Ed's guidance, never changed. He was always a mentor, always looking out for the best for the township. That was Ed's first and foremost concern, was the township. And he served this township with the following advice that he always gave to me: Serve the township and its residents with the utmost of professionalism, even in situations where you may not be giving them the popular response that they want. Professionalism. To remember that you have a fiduciary duty to the township and its residents at all times. Administer by following the codes and standards set forth by the township, the state, in his case, the Licensing Bureau for his license. So Ed has always been the utmost professional, and I will miss the 6:45 a.m. calls where Ed had figured out that I like to be in, have my tea, and time to read my emails before staff comes in in the morning. 6:45, phone goes off. I don't even have to look. I answer: Good morning, Ed. I won't miss trying to spell Plucienic. Thank God for the email. I don't have to spell it out. But in all seriousness, Ed, you will surely be missed, and you are leaving a very large void that will not easily be filled in this township. Thank you very much.
And Ed, I just wanted to follow up on the comments from Director McLahoney there. I mean, you gave just an amazing contribution to the township for the last 28 years, beginning back in 1994. Public Works is the infrastructure of the township. It's the roads, the signs, sidewalks, things that people pass along every day. And just to know that you've been involved in just about every facet of the way this township has developed, redeveloped, things have been repaired, maintained. I mean, you can go around outside the township, and you've been involved in all of that. And I think that's just an amazing contribution of 28 years. I thank you for that. And I know, once I first got on the board, our manager described you as careful and precise, and that's exactly what I saw the whole time, that I was fortunate enough to work with you. And I think you're also a living library of just knowledge and information in the township. So I wanted to thank you very, very much for your contributions, and you'll certainly be missed.
Thank you. That was Commissioner Mike McKeon, who is the Chair of the Public Works Committee. We have a couple of other commissioners who want to say a few things to you. I will start with Vice President Gavron.
Great. Thank you very much. So, Ed, I got to sit next to you when I started on this board and got to know you a little bit up on the dais here, but really where I got to know you was one of my first projects where I learned so much more than I ever needed to learn about septic systems and sewers. I came onto this board, and almost immediately, on one of our streets, one of the residents' septic system had failed. They were on private systems. He couldn't replace it because of environmental laws. And so we had a year and a half, two-year-long project on trying to get this street onto public sewer. And I didn't know what I was doing. Some say I still don't know what I'm doing. But Ed, working with you, you know, again, what Paul said, professionalism, knowledge, communication, you were incredibly helpful to me. I learned so much from you. It was an honor to work with you. I saw, you know, Paul talked about all the big projects you worked on, and of course, your focus is on those big projects, but you didn't forget about those little projects. And every single project affects residents of Lower Merion, and you gave those as much attention as any other project, and really respected that. And to me, you know, a leader doesn't only show kind of their leadership while working on the projects they're working on, it's also how you leave us. And you have left us in wonderful hands, maybe, somebody whose last name isn't much easier to spell, but have left us with another township engineer who you've trained, you've worked with, and really, we are in great hands, thanks to you, thanks to all the work you've done and how you've left us. So thank you very much. I hope you enjoy your retirement, and it's been an absolute pleasure to work with you.
Thank you, Vice President Gavron, and Commissioner Scott Ziloff.
Thank you. Ed, this is indeed a special night, and I guess the proof of that is Paul McLahoney has never spoken that long. Your 28 years of service has been mentioned so many times. Believe it or not, I mean, I know you know this, but it's actually longer than I've been on this board. And Ed, you do have the best handlebar mustache around.
My side doesn't want to cooperate.
You are reliable. Of course, you've been so knowledgeable. You're a problem solver, and you have a sense of humor. And you have been the overseer of so many projects, but also of so many talented engineers who are sitting in the room with us tonight, and with Joe here, who has very big shoes to fill. And a little-known fact about Ed Plucienic, he has also been an elected official. He was on the Borough Council in that large metropolis of West Conchahocca. And so Ed had some very good understanding of what we do here. And one of my favorite lines from Ed Plucienic is, "There's normal time, and then there's Lower Merion time." And so if we don't get it, Ed knew if he didn't get it done quickly in Lower Merion, there'll be consequences of that. And you have been a pleasure to work with. It's just one thing I've always tried to plan for, is when I have a conversation with you, I always have to make sure I allocate lots of time. But you know, your command of information, the details, has been so valuable. We're going to miss you, and we wish you a return to good health, and thank you.
So, thank you, Commissioner Ziloff. We have some things for you, but first, it's been a lot about Ed. Verna, so Commissioner Grimes has something for you. Thank you so much for letting us have so much of Ed. Some of these meetings go kind of late, and he has to be here. And so we very much appreciate you sharing him with us for as many decades as you have. Thank you very much. If you can give those to her, and then I'll... Yeah, yeah. And then Commissioner Grimes has something for it.
Thank you. President Sinai was trying to hurry me along by having me give the flowers and not give me a chance to talk first. So I just want to say, I know it sort of in two capacities. One, as with Vice President Gavron, I also, when I joined this board, sat at the end of the, I'm sorry to call it the end of the dais, but whatever it is. And when I joined the board, the commissioner next to me was not here often. So Ed, I don't know if you remember, you and I would have conversations, you know, quite frequently, and I missed those as I've advanced through the board, but I got to know you and pick up some experience along the way, or your knowledge along the way, which I appreciate just at these board meetings. The other thing is Chair of Building and Planning. As many of you may know, in fact, most of the people in this room probably know this, with every land development application in the township, there is a Township Engineers Report, talking about sewer, talking about drainage, all sorts of other issues, you know, storm waters, slopes, everything that you would expect would be in those reports. And Ed, you authored probably thousands of those in your time, with tens of thousands, maybe?
I had Kevin Bowers, if you remember.
Right, yes, of course.
He was my, what do you want to call it? He was the host writer.
You know what? You should just take the credit. So, I mean, in fact, I was thinking, I kind of got stumbled tonight, because I was prepared to say tonight that you've probably been involved in land development more than anyone else in this room, and then I see Bob Duncan is here, so I probably shouldn't say that. But it's probably neck and neck, neck and neck between the two of you. And certainly, you know, Joe's doing a great job with that, but the Township Engineers Reports you did, or maybe Kevin did, were really invaluable. So we thank you for that and everything else you've done for the township. So with that being said, we have one other... Thank you, although I have to read it. So this is our gift, very small gift to Ed for his years of service to the township, and I will read it. Edward P. Plucienic, P.E., Township Engineer, 1994 to 2022, with appreciation for your dedication and service to the residents of Lower Merion Township. So thank you again, Ed.
And thank you, Commissioner Grimes. And, you know, just to sum up, I can't top the words of my colleagues, but the observation to make here, which is that a true testament to your contributions here and throughout your life, in your professional life, has been all the people who are here to celebrate your retirement with you tonight, and who have come back from all over different parts and different periods of your career to be here. I can think of nothing more meaningful and, you know, evident for the impact that you have made in this township and on people's lives and that. And thank you so much for your service, and we wish you the very best for the next phase of your, you know, your future.
I like you.
That's the word I'm looking for. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Give it to her after we've had the applause.
Yeah, I guess I'd like to just say I'm a little bit lost for words, Paul. Actually, I just, I've thought about this. Actually, I told Andy I didn't want to have anything. I like to sort of get things done. That's what engineers do, and we get satisfaction out of the work that we do, and we get a lot of joy out of the people we work with. Over the 28 years, sometimes I'd sit up here at the board meeting and look at the photographs on the lower level in the back here, and try to think how many commissioners that I've worked with. But I will tell you that this has been the most rewarding, personally and professionally, experience of my career, and I really mean that. And I really want to thank all of the members of this board who've appointed me, and the prior boards who have supported me over the years, and given me the opportunity to serve in the capacity as a township engineer, and be part of the team with the township. And that credit goes to the manager, and prior managers, and all of the staff. I've always felt, and they've embraced me, as well as my staff, Kevin Bowers, I see Brian Keith here, of course, Joe. I don't know if Joe will thank me in the future, but, you know, I think he will. He'll do a good job. And the goal is, is that he's going to make it better. It's always what we strive to do. But I want to sincerely thank everyone, including the staff, for making me feel part of the team, part of the family. And it's proven to me that the township of Lower Merion is a first-class township, and not only by code, but by its heart and its spirit. And I'd also like to thank the community, the residents of the township, who've always been courteous and helpful in solving the problems that we have every day in life. And that's been very refreshing and rewarding. So with that, is that my 15 minutes left? I could go on, but no, seriously, thank you. I do really appreciate it, and I will miss each and every one of you. And if anybody needs an answer, a question, you don't even have to buy me a cup of coffee. I'll buy them coffee. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Well, you have a long night, so.
Thank you. Thanks, Ed.
Have a nice holiday.
You too, Ed. start with the Police Committee. I recognize its Chair, Commissioner McCombe.
Thank you, President Sinai. We have two items on the Police Committee agenda tonight. The first is a possible authorization of police promotions, and the second is an announcement regarding rewards received recently by several Lower Merion Police Officers. So for the first item, we'll hear from our Superintendent, Michael McGrath.
I'd just say thank you guys for being the machine to make my dad, for him to be the best version of himself. You guys really kind of set the bar, so thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yes, so this evening, it's my pleasure to bring forward the recommendation for the promotion of one captain, one lieutenant, and one sergeant. It previously had been listed for two lieutenants and two sergeants. However, just in the last couple of days, a candidate for one of those positions had requested to withdraw from consideration. So that will be, we are reducing it at this time, and then we'll address the other openings after the first of the year. So the candidates that I'm asking you to promote to the rank of captain is current Lieutenant John Tucci. Just briefly, John's been with us for 23 years, the last seven as a lieutenant. He has worked in various divisions throughout the Police Department. He's got certifications from FEMA and the Department of Homeland Security in hazmat and terrorism-related courses. He also has a bachelor's degree in Business and Criminal Justice from Rutgers. John's proven track record, professional demeanor over the years has served us well. He's served in the capacity of the Staff Services Division, addressing things such as budget, recruitment, accreditation, among various other job responsibilities. John has the leadership capabilities that we're looking for for this position, and I believe he will serve the department, the township, the community very well in this role. For the rank of lieutenant, Sergeant Justin Judge is being recommended. He has 15 years' experience with the department, last three as a sergeant. He's served in multiple units within the Patrol Division, has always come out with high evaluation marks from various commanders he's served on there. He has numerous commendations and letters of appreciation from the community. He has a vast amount of training in a variety of areas, coupled a highlight are risk management and Penn State Municipal Leadership Program. John's strong work, Justin's strong work ethic is well-known in the department. He's got the knowledge, skills, and ability to be an effective member of our command staff. And then the last recommendation is for Officer Madeline Lewis to assume the rank of sergeant. Madeline has 10 years of service with the department. The last several years, she has been in the Staff Division of the Police Department, and has brought forward a variety of new programs, including bringing a virtual reality training platform to the department, helped set up our HUB program, which helps individuals in need of social services throughout the community. Also receives high rankings in her evaluations. She has the skills, knowledge, and ability for her new role as a supervisor in the Police Department, and I ask that you approve these recommendations.
Thank you, Superintendent. Are there any Commissioner comments or questions regarding these possible promotions? Any public comment? Jody, we have anybody online?
No online.
Okay, so I'll put in the form of a motion that we recommended the Board of Commissioners authorization for the promotion of Lieutenant John Tucci to captain, Sergeant Justin Judge to lieutenant, and Officer Madeline Lewis to sergeant from the list of candidates certified by the Civil Service Commission as recommended by the Superintendent of Police to be effective Monday, December 19, 2022. I have a second. Thank you, Commissioner Ziloff. Call to vote, all in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Secretary, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Superintendent. The second item is an announcement. I'm very pleased to announce that last December 7, the National Liberty Museum in Philadelphia gave awards of valor to several Lower Merion Police Officers. Those awards of valor are for extraordinary acts of courage and meritorious service. They arose out of an incident this time last year at the Waverly Heights Senior Care Center, when they intervened and apprehended an intruder at that center who was armed with a semi-automatic weapon and 70 rounds of ammunition, and was intent on murdering a former supervisor. The fact that a catastrophe, a nightmare was prevented is a tribute to our department, to the supervision, to the skill and training, and it reflects the highest attributes of personal courage and poise under pressure, and it makes us very grateful and very, very proud of the department. Those officers are Sergeant Justin Judge, Sergeant Ian Thornton, Officer Vicenzo Chucheron, Officer William Keith, Officer Joseph Smith, Officer Darren Brow, Officer Charles Farrell, and Officer Alexander Muller. And I'd ask everybody on the dais to rise and give him a standing clap.
Thank you for that recognition. We appreciate it.
And that concludes the business of the Police Committee.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner McCombe. We now turn to the Building and Planning Committee, recognize its Chair, Commissioner Grimes.
Great. Thank you, President Sinai. We have one matter on the
We have one matter on the Building and Planning Agenda. This is to consider for recommendation to the Board retention of Amanda Holt, a redistricting specialist, to assist with the review of redistricting options as outlined in a proposal which has been distributed as part of the agenda in the amount of $4,500. Is there someone speaking on this? What's that?
It would be me.
Oh, President Sinai.
Okay, sure. So, thank you, Commissioner Grimes. This is just for consulting services as we finish up our ward remapping to support staff as we go through and evaluate the advertised map and consolidate any public comment, Commissioner refinements, or citizens submitted maps to help the Board navigate it with a goal to have a hearing on January 11th where we're going to adopt a redistricting map. Hopefully that's enough explanation.
Okay, thank you. So we will open this up to any Commissioner comments.
Does this second?
We didn't put a motion out. Actually, you know what? I'm going to make a motion just to get this on the table. I will move to recommend to the Board of Commissioners retention of Amanda Holt, redistricting specialist, to assist with the review of redistricting options as outlined in the proposal dated December 9, 2022, and the amount of $4,500 with potential additional costs indicated. Thank you, Vice President Gavron, seconding. Commissioner Bernheim.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Grimes. A number of years ago, it's maybe five or so, when we were confronted with not our own redistricting, but some others that impacted Lower Marion, and we actually passed the resolution of that which we approved and did not, I had the opportunity to speak with Amanda Holt, and she was somewhat new to this game of redistricting, and an absolute delight in my recollection that she had been a piano teacher who saw that there were some problems with the state, and she herself could come up with a better formula, and indeed she did, and ended up in court approving it. So the idea of having her provide some assistance is something that I could easily see would be beneficial to us. The only issue I have with the proposal here is the manner in which it is structured. So her hourly rate at $150 an hour, I have no problem with. A bottom line of $4,500, I have no problem with, but it's about 30 hours of work. But the deliverables as set forth here almost mandate that she do things that she may find are unnecessary. So for example, after the first phase of the review, the second phase is a requirement that she come up with no more than three modifications. It may be that she determines that our, what we refer to as option number two, is fine and only needs a little bit of tinkering. So I would propose that we have a contract that states that we will hire her for her rate of $150 an hour for a maximum of 30 hours. If she comes back and tells us she may need more, we can contemplate that. But that we would state that she is not required to give us three sets of modifications if she deems it's unnecessary. So I would change that, so it would read adhere to the math parameters established by the Board, and if considered necessary, provide recommended modifications in collaboration with Township staff.
So thank you. So before I accept that as a friendly amendment, I will express a concern to either President Sinai or our Township Manager of doing this without knowing if that's acceptable to Ms. Holt.
Well, but let me finish, and then I'll tell you why I would suggest that it would not be unacceptable to her. The last one would also be what she has as deliverable number three, so where it says provide one set of provisions. Again, if considered necessary, provide revisions to the proposed ward boundaries. She's not confined that she doesn't get paid if she doesn't have these deliverables. It is up to her expertise to determine, do I need modifications, and if so, to what degree, and we're committing to pay her her hourly rate. I would be very surprised if she would find that anything but more advantageous to her, not disadvantageous, so she knows she can just go ahead and perform as a consultant. We don't have an actual contract, but we can go ahead and authorize, be it our Township Manager, who would go ahead and enter into it, to have it a little bit more open-ended and not force that someone need make changes if they come up with a decision saying, you know what, it's not necessary.
Okay, I'll take it as a friendly amendment. Let me also say, just for any Commissioners who wish to make any comments or ask questions, and applies to you also, Commissioner Bernheim, I've just been told that Ms. Holt is available by Zoom. She's on Zoom right now, so if anyone wanted to direct any questions to her, we could do that. So are there any other, Commissioner Stevenson, go ahead.
I just wanted to briefly say that, thank you, first of all, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that this is just an additional opportunity for us to maximize getting this right. I think that, I know that the consultant was used by some other municipalities, and I also know that in conjunction with what is outlined with the work that the staff is already doing, with the input of the ward leaders and consultation with members of the communities, this is just an added piece to make sure that we get this right. So thank you all for your participation and work on this.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep, thank you. Any other Commissioners, Commissioner Zeloff?
Thank you, Commissioner Grimes. I think it's important to say that we have had excellent work from Colleen Hall and Charlie Doyle, using the GIS system that the Township has, that many Townships do not have, with the skills that they have that other Townships don't have, with the time they've put into this, generating three maps, and with a lot of feedback, both publicly and in other discussions. So this should not in any way be a reflection of the other, the only reflection should be an acknowledgement of the high quality of the work that they have done for us. And it's also, you know, it doesn't need to be said, but I'm going to say it anyway, if we engage Amanda Holt, it's vital that her work be nonpartisan, because to date, the work of our staff, and from my view, has been nonpartisan, and that's essential. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McCombe?
Commissioner Zeloff took the words right out of my mouth. I think it's not a reflection on building and planning. I think the work was excellent. This is something we do every 10 years. We don't have a body of knowledge. We're at the end. I think the process has worked well. We just want to do as good a job as possible at the completion point, so I think we should approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, President Sinai.
Thank you, Commissioner Grimes. So, you know, I concur with Commissioner Zeloff, and our staff has done a tremendous painstaking job on this. And, you know, there's a couple of reasons for proposing the consultant at this point. One is that the tremendous painstaking job is incredibly time-consuming, and that is exactly why I'm looking to get some additional help at this point. And they've done a wonderful job. So just by way of background, Ms. Holt has done similar sort of consulting work for Radnor Township, or Borland Township, is someone who has more than doing it once every 10 years kind of expertise and practice, and so relatively, hopefully, efficient way of working through some of the stuff we're going to work through between now and when we get to adopt this sort of thing, especially when it comes through sifting through, you know, public comment, Commissioner refinements that they're going to want, having someone who can efficiently communicate that to the Board and help us navigate through it in an effective way, seems to me as a very useful thing to have on board. And that was really the motivation for doing it. As Board President, I would like the Building and Planning Staff to get back to building and planning. There's a lot of stuff that we really, as a Township, want to accomplish, and, you know, we have pulled them aside for this, and I think we don't need them to continue to spend as much time on it to get across the finish line. Having said that, I'm sympathetic to Commissioner Bernheim's suggestion. The only reason I don't like it is that I cannot imagine that this is less than 30 hours of work, and I think the fixed-price contract is actually going to end up ex post being a good deal, that we have a certain number of deliverables that need to be done. Now, I agree with him that not everything in here necessarily needs to be delivered, but the work needs to be done to figure out what needs to be delivered. And the way that I think of it is that an outcome of this might be an evaluation, and option two is like, turns out to be the thing that is exactly what satisfies the Board's objectives. And in that case, it's good to have, in other sense, I sort of look at it and tell us that. And then again, spend the time to work through all the, you know, public comment and suggestions and give it the, you know, the attention that it would deserve. So I actually think it's more cost-effective to the Township to do this, this $4,500. So I am going to propose an amendment, which is, I would move that we amend this back to the original contract.
Is there a second? A second for you? Commissioner McKeon is seconding.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any Commissioner, further Commissioner questions or comments before we take up? I think I'd like, since we may be, well, you know what, why don't we deal with the amendment actually now? Are there any Commissioners who wish to comment on President Sinai's amendment?
Commissioner Gilda Kramer.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kramer, go ahead.
I support President Sinai's proposed amendment. I think it's important for us to have deliverables, and I think it's important for us to see and to ask Ms. Holt if she can help to minimize the deviation between the largest and smallest wards, and I think that the original proposed contract is better than the proposed change.
Are there any other Commissioners who wish to comment on the motion for the, seeing none, why don't we take a vote on this? This is, and to be clear, this is on President Sinai's motion to amend the contract to revert to the original arrangement. All those in favor, please raise your hand, signifying eye. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. All those opposed? One, two, three, four, five. Oh, it's Commissioner O'Neill also, so that's seven to six, the motion, unless I'm missing someone. The motion passes, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, the motion passes. So we will now go back to the original, to the original motion that I made before the friendly amendment that was defeated. Are there any other Commissioners who wish to comment on that before we go to public comment? Commissioner McKeon?
Thank you, Commissioner Grimes. I had the opportunity to poke around Radnor's website, and I think Ms. Holt did a presentation that was submitted in September. I think the cost of it was $4,000 for all of her services, and if you look online, you can see the original map and then the modifications of it, and I thought the map that I believe Radnor voted to approve on December 12th, it cleaned up a lot of little boundary lines. There was one ward that stayed the same. The rest of the wards were really tightened up in very reasonable ways. I can't speak to what communities and how they were all impacted, because I just don't know where Garrett Hill would fit in and other parts of Radnor, but it looked like a very noticeable improvement. I think this is a very good deal. The population of Radnor is like half of Lower Marion's, and I believe the cost for Radnor, not that Ms. Holt should be raising the price in the middle of this meeting, but $4,500, I think, for this versus $4,000 for Radnor, so that's very good. And something that shouldn't be lost in this, too, is that in order to get the map through for the next election cycle, it has to be passed by the county, so no matter what we do, the county still has to approve it. And in order to get it to the county, we have to get things done on our end in the middle of January. So I think it's fantastic that Ms. Holt is able to have the flexibility to work with our very tight timeline to get everything done. So I think it's a great service overall.
Okay. Any other Commissioners who have not spoken yet? I'm looking at the Commissioners online. Okay, I'll just make a brief comment. So I'm going to support this, but I want to note a hesitation I have, even though I'm going to support it. When we last took up redistricting, I was opposed to advertising the ward map because I felt very strongly that we should receive community and public input before we published a map, so we didn't look like there was any sense of working ahead of the public. And I do have a concern because of necessity on this proposal, she is going to be preparing parameters for, she's going to be preparing modifications on the advertised map, probably before we get, we have a public meeting in early January on this. So once again, we're moving forward without, in some sense, maximum public comment. Having said that, I don't think there's any other way to do it, given the time constraints that we have to work on. I would note to members of the public who are interested in this, is that one benefit of having Ms. Holt on board with this is that she will be receiving the public comment that we get and incorporating it into her work that she then presents to the Board. So to the extent there are members of the public that want to have input, you don't need to wait for a meeting. You could do this today, tomorrow, you know, Christmas, if that's your thing, or whatever, and give us that comment, so, and we will incorporate it to the extent that it's appropriate to do so. So having said that, overall, I will support this, but just wanted to note that. So is there any public comment on this matter? Please, ma'am.
Jamie Moll, Harvard, I think goes without saying. I think this is fabulous, and I just want to commend all of you for listening to the public, recognizing how important and pertinent it is to have the public's input, and know that you are recognizing the importance of this process to be transparent. And I agree with you, Commissioner Zeloff, it is not anything reflective of the great work Charlie and Colleen have done, and only, I think, would benefit when already Amanda has seen the work that they've done, but I think just to, you know, as President Sinai said, get them back to work. And the nonpartisanship, I think if you've researched Amanda or looked at any of the work she's done, nonpartisan is not even a strong enough word to represent that she is all about fairness and representation, and she was a piano teacher, but she also understands what it's like to be in local government, so I think that's a testament, and that she understands this compressed timeline. And with respect to her work in Radnor, I'm glad that you looked at that, because she worked with communities like Villanova University. So we have Bryn Mawr or other colleges, that's a community, too, that we want to recognize, and she is used to doing that, and I'm very excited. And I just wanted to thank you all, because I think this is a fantastic representative of the work that you're doing, to listen to the community and involve the community in what will be maps for the next 10 years. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Ms. Seltzer?
Adrian Seltzer, Winwood. I just want to say that it is a show of strength from the Board to admit that you need help. And redistricting is a really important thing, and it's a very big responsibility, and I'm glad that you looked at the issue and saw you needed help and went and got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph Abramson, Ballackinwood. One question regarding the deliverability, the deliverables, is, are we considering, or are you considering Amanda as a sort of citizen redistricting commission in which her proposed ward maps are just going to be rubber stamped by you? Or is there a possibility that she's going to present something, you're going to look at it and say, nah, and then you go and propose your own map, in which case the whole consulting was a waste? So, you know, there's the deliverable saying, oh, we want her to deliver this, this, and this, and this. But from your side, when you get those deliverables, you know, is there a guarantee from anyone that you will make use of that? Also, you know, with regards to the redistricting, you know, I know that, you know, nobody likes, or a lot of people don't like more government, but, you know, is she going to be looking just at redistricting, or also the possibility of increasing the ward, the Township Commission size to 15, which is the max allowed by law? So right now, we have 14 Commissioners. You can go to 15 without any, you know, probably maybe an ordinance or something, but you can go to 15 if that makes the redistricting easier. Is that something that she's going to consider? And finally, since it was mentioned that public comment can be done tonight for whatever, you know, she's going to be taking into account, so I wanted to reiterate, I don't know if it's interesting, but like, at Highland... at Old, at Highland and, um, Old Lancaster, there's, with, with the Ballackinwood library is, you have across the street is, um, the Kohela Yeshiva, across the street is Adath Israel, and across the street is Lower Marion Synagogue. If you stand at that corner and make a one mile radius circle, you're in three different wards. And that's kind of splitting the community apart, or into different wards. Um, I think that should also be taken into account, you know, as we, we, you know, as populations migrate east and, and certain wards are getting bigger and bigger, you know, that should also be one of the considerations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Uh, is there anyone online?
No, there's not.
Okay. Um, are there any commissioners who wish to respond? President Sinai, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Grimes. I just wanted, uh, quickly respond to Mr. Abramson. So, so the, um, uh, so, so just a, a couple of quick responses. So, so no, this is, this is not a citizen redistricting commission. Um, you, the, uh, Ms. Holt works for, for the Board of Commissioners, um, so it's the, the board who will be directing what, what her mandate is to do. Um, having said that, you know, the, the board's interest is in collecting public input. We have a rather compressed timeline, so we're going to try and be as public as possible between now and over the holidays, um, which means that, that, that comments and submissions are just going to be posted for the public, uh, so people see what comes in, right? And so, and so that will be, that will be how we just maintain the kind of visibility on it. But at the end of the day, it's this board that votes on maps and decides what gets passed, uh, and I, I don't think this board is going to relinquish that to, to a, uh, to another commission. The question about whether we're considering increasing the number of wards, um, you know, it is, it is a concept that I, that I've heard before. Uh, you, leaving aside the merits of it, uh, it is a heavy lift between now and January eleventh, and so it's not something that I expect this board is going to consider. And then, uh, about the, about the, you know, what should be in, in what, uh, uh, you know, awards, um, you, your, your comments are, you know, along the lines of, of many other comments we've heard, and the reason for setting up a process of submitting public comment is that there will be a, you know, a venue for you to, to, to submit those comments, um, so, so they can be, you know, uh, you know, assessed in the context of all your comments that we expect to get, right? Um, and I think that's why, that's why we're trying to set up a, a, a fair process to deal with it. Uh, and I, I think the only, you know, correction I'll, I'll make to, um, uh, what Commissioner Grimes had said earlier is that, you know, if the board chooses, because I, I think we still have to vote, right? Um, yeah, so, so if the board chooses to, to retain Ms. Holt, uh, it's not going to be a matter of just emailing her. There will, there'll be a township setup mechanism for, for collecting that, that information, and we will, and we will circulate that, um, and so people will have access to it.
That's a friendly amendment to my comments.
Okay.
Thank you. Vice President Gavron?
Thank you, Commissioner Grimes. Um, I just want to, uh, thank Ms. Mogul and Ms. Seltzer. From the beginning, you guys have pushed us on this and really raised the awareness of this important issue to us. And I think we're going to end up with a better product and a better process because of it. I think it's a, a great example of, of public comment and, and people who are in the community and concerned about an issue coming, raising this issue, the board hearing you out, and, um, really, really improving our work because of, of what you do. So thank you both very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Other commissioners? Okay. So, uh, we will call, I'm sorry, I'm looking online, forgot to look online. We will call the vote. Um, all those in favor of the, uh, motion to award the contract to Ms. Holt, please raise your hand signifying aye. One, two, three, four, five. Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and that concludes the business of building and planning.
Hey, thank you very much, Commissioner Grimes. Um, so with that, we turn to our Board of Commissioners meeting, called to order with the December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Lower Marion. Please come to order, and everyone's already rising to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Sean Kramer has asked to be excused. Mr. Bernheim?
Present.
Mr. Churchill?
Here.
Mr. Courtney?
Here.
Mr. Gavin?
Present.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Ms. G Kramer?
Here.
Mr. McComb?
Here.
Mr. McKeon?
Here.
I know that Ms. O'Neill is here, but she's off the screen right now. Uh, Mr. Stevenson?
Present.
Mr. Whalen?
Here.
Mr. Zello?
Here.
Mr. Sinai?
Present.
Mr. President, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Uh, so a move for the approval of the minutes of a special meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on November second, twenty twenty-two, and a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, as distributed. Second, thank you, Vice President Gavron. All in favor? Opposed? Sentenced? Um, Secretary, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
The board met in executive session on November thirtieth and earlier this evening to receive reports from its professional staff regarding personnel matters, legal matters, Lower Marion School District, and coronavirus. A redistricting open house will be held on Wednesday, January fourth, twenty twenty-three, at six PM in the boardroom. This day holiday will be observed on Monday, December twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, and the New Year's Day holiday will be observed on Monday, January second, twenty twenty-three. These are legal holidays, and the Township Administration Building and Libraries will be closed for business, and there will be no refuse or recycling collection those days. You will have the holiday schedule on those weeks. With that, we turn to public privilege of the floor. This is the section of our meeting where members of the public may address the board on any non-agenda items or any other public matters in which the board has authority. Uh, the township has jurisdiction or authority, I should say. Uh, please keep comments to three minutes or less, and, uh, we already have an attendee approaching the podium, um, you know, the drill, please speak into that microphone so we can hear you.
Thank you. Joseph Abramson, Ballackinwood. Um, this morning, I happened to get dressed and go to the work in the office, um, and it's happened to be in Philadelphia. And I noticed the stark difference between Philadelphia and Lower Marion when I looked at all the bike lanes on Market and Chestnut and all the side streets. I biked here tonight, and interestingly enough, Ms. Seltzer mentioned that, she asked if I was the one that she didn't hit as she was driving up Argyle. And I was like, yep. And, you know, the, when I'm, I'm driving, I, I ride from Ballackinwood to here, and, you know, I have to just hope that people remember the laws of how to drive with a bike on the road, because there are no bike lanes, until I cross Lancaster to get onto Wynwood Road. Because I'm certainly not going to bike up Montgomery. And, you know, I'm just wondering what we can do, because, you know, to encourage people to bike, we need safe biking lanes, safe biking paths, and also a place to lock your bike. Um, you know, if I, I go shopping sometimes, I ride my bike, I have my little, uh, bag that I bring up to my apartment, but I can't park anywhere. And even if we get those, you know, I, I know we have occasionally along Montgomery, there's a, um, little, um, things attached to the parking meters, but we need more of that, and we need more just infrastructure for biking. If we want people to stop using cars or even just encourage biking, we need it to make it safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, does anyone else in the boardroom wish to take advantage of public privilege?
Hello, Adrian Seltzer, Wynwood. Um, I could have fallen off the chair with Commissioner Gavron's, um, comments, and I want to, um, let the public know that it is possible to get change to happen if you show up and pay attention. Um, I have a newsletter, it's called Stand Up for Lower Marion and Narberth, and each week, there's a calendar of events. You have links to each one of these meetings that the commissioners do, that the, um, that the school board does, and their agendas, plus other topics that are in there. And that is something that you can sign up for by just emailing standuplowermarion@gmail.com, and you can get this weekly newsletter. And this, it makes a difference. It's easier to come to the meeting. I know what's, I know what's happening, even though I, I put it together with Annie Dennison. But this is something that I think is public service and will help the public be more involved. It is possible to get some change, and I, please, I'm begging who's ever watching. Thank you.
And thank you. Anyone else in the room wish to take advantage of public privilege? Jody, is anyone online?
Um, Josh, does Mr. Davis want to speak? Okay.
That's my understanding.
Okay. I'm going to promote him to a panelist. Oh, here we go. So we have Ken Davis online.
We can hear you, yes. We cannot see you. If it's possible, if you turn on your camera, that is, that is how we usually do things.
What I did. Start video there. Okay, hello, guys.
There you go.
Ladies, how are you? Uh, I'm sorry that I wasn't able to, to join when, uh, you were honoring Ed Plachanek, but I wanted just to say a, a couple of words, uh, about him. When I joined the board in nineteen ninety-one, um, actually Chuck Benoni himself was the engineer who sat through all of our meetings. Um, he sat through the, the nights of building and planning, and then, of course, he sat through the, uh, the board meetings. And he came to us at some point and said that his company was growing and he needed to spend more time, uh, on the management side, uh, and asked if, if he could appoint someone to serve as, as our, as our manager, as our engineer. Um, so for a very brief period, there was someone else, uh, and then Ed joined, uh, the group, and I, I can't say enough about the great work, uh, that he did, uh, for us, uh, all those years. Uh, I had one particular ward occasion to deal with him, and that had to do with, uh, the construction of the, the Ashburn, uh, baseball field. Um, it's kind of a long story, which I will not share with you, but in any event, that used to be the, the, the place where we dumped, uh, all of the, uh, the tree stumps that were cut down in the township, and we owned it. Uh, and some people thought it was a good idea to turn it into a baseball field, and I certainly supported that. And Ed and his, uh, and his team, uh, Dan Demucci and Kevin and a whole bunch of others did a great job in, in, uh, in designing it. Uh, he and Bob Duncan were the best tag team match that, that I ever saw, and, uh, they were always attentive, uh, to us and always responsive, uh, to us when we had questions. So I'm delighted that you spent the time tonight, um, honoring him, and, um, I certainly hope that, uh, that that, the tradition will, uh, will continue. Thanks very much for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Uh, Jody, is there anyone else online?
Uh, there is not.
Okay. Um, does any, uh, board member wish to respond to public privilege? You know, I, I will actually just, just quickly go first, um, if, if I may. Um, and, and that is, that is first to Ms. Seltzer, who, who says that people should show up and, 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 uh, address the board. Um, and, and that is simply to say that, like, absolutely, we, we value your comments, we always, always listen, and we cannot guarantee that we will agree with you, um, but we will hear you. Um, and, and I think that everyone on this board feels very strongly about that, and that's one of the things that makes it such an effective township. Um, and for Mr. Abramson with, with, with bike infrastructure, I agree. Okay, um, Commissioner Zaloff?
Uh, thank you, President Sinai. Um, uh, with regard to Mr. Abramson, Abramson's comments, um, in the goals for twenty twenty-three for the Building and Planning Department, uh, work with other township departments and civic associations and other stakeholders to improve pedestrian and bicycle mobility. But that's not all. Much more importantly, uh, our manager notified us very recently that we are the beneficiary, along with another township, of a two hundred thousand dollar grant, uh, for, um, help finalizing planning for the mainline greenway and other bike connections, uh, including identifying potential on-road bike lanes and bicycle facilities. Um, I don't know if you coordinated on this, that was a good setup, but it's a great opportunity to announce that grant that was just very recently communicated to us, and it's very good news for, uh, Lower Marion and for bike lanes and the issues that you've raised. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zaloff. Uh, Commissioner McComb?
Just a, a brief comment to Mr. Abramson. I, I, I agree. Uh, I think Commissioner Zaloff is right. It is an important issue, and I noticed when I leave Ballackinwood and I try and take public transportation, which I know you do on occasion, but when you cross City Avenue on, say, Brenmore Avenue, all of a sudden, you see bike lanes. And the people in City, in the City of Philadelphia have a much better sense of the need for respecting bike travel and how it works. But, uh, as Commissioners Zaloff point out, we're making improvements. I, I'm not going to call on, um, Director Lesswing over there, but this is a subject near and dear to his heart in terms of the mainline greenway, and sort of, this is an opportunity for, for you to take some leadership on this. I, you know, lots of times, people appear and say, well, we think the township should do something, and certainly we do, but this is an opportunity for you and others, there, there are bike groups in the township, and there's, there are resources, but it's important. Uh, as you know, from riding over here tonight, you know, it's, it's important, and it, it's a, you know, walkability and bikeability are really critical. That's, that's part of what we, we've been doing with the comprehensive plan. So I appreciate you bringing it forward, and think we should all be continuing that dialogue. So, thank you.
And thank you, Commissioner McComb. Any other commissioners? All right? Great, thank you, everyone. We'll now turn to public comment. This is the section of the meeting where members of the public may address the board on any agenda items. Again, please keep comments to three minutes or less. All comments relating to agenda items, including those about the budget, this is the time to make them. If you have comments about the ordinance that is remending fees associated with the collection of liens, uh, that is the only thing, this is not the time to comment on that, we will have comments on later. Everything else on tonight's agenda, this is the time. Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Ben Driscoll, I'm resident of Wynwood. My comments tonight are about the CIP, which I believe is fair game on the agenda, and in particular, uh, two projects. The first one will be VIL number one. This is the proposed sidewalk along County Line Road from North Spring Mill to Clermont. We have an existing uncertainty with this project that is not reflected in the CIP as it's currently written. First, this proposed sidewalk spans four properties, but the CIP only lists three properties, and it leaves out the fourth property currently owned by, eighteen thirty-five currently owned by the Lower Marion School District. It's just not listed. This board has stated at previous meetings that it is working with the school district at options that include not having all or some of the fields built at eighteen thirty-five County Line Road. Well, we, we could assume that if alternative sites are found, and I presume maybe the project forty-five-ten for athletic fields at Youngs Ford Road and Waverly Road, that the school district would not build all the, as many fields there, if any at all. And if such, then the school district leaves the property, but this project is listed in the CIP, will also be three-fourths of a sidewalk. In contrast, let's also assume the school district does build these fields, and therefore does build the sidewalk and its portion. This community, not just the school district, will have a disparity in funding. The three property owners that are listed in the CIP will have access to township funding, but the school district will not. This is not equitable, and there is no sidewalk policy that's been formally adopted by the township that allows for this inequality. The uncertainty is that the construction of school districts proposal coupled with inequity in funding are ambiguities we know today, but they are not reflected in the CIP and the project VIL one. So my request with respect to VIL one is that you amend it to include a sentence similar to this. You, not this language, but just give you an idea. At this time, LMSD's plans to build all the fields at eighteen thirty-five County Line Road is uncertain, such as the township may decide to fund the portion of sidewalks spanning this property and thereby increasing the cost listed therein. My second request is VIL number six. This is the project to improve this intersection of Spring Mill Road and Montgomery Avenue. As currently written, the CIP states that LMSD will contribute five hundred thousand dollars to this project. This funding is for an off-site improvement that arose from a condition of approval applied to LMSD's plans to build the new Black Rock Middle School at eighteen sixty. Eleven parcels and approximately one-half of a mile separate Black Rock Middle School from this intersection. Since it's an off-site improvement, I would like to ask that you amend VIL six in this manner. Two things. First, add the sentence that says something to this effect, "The township is reconsidering its request of five hundred thousand dollars from LMSD to partially fund this project." If you were to do that, you'd have to then make a second change, which goes with it, of moving the five hundred thousand dollars that I think you have budget for twenty twenty-three to either twenty twenty-four sometime later, they go together. I hope the language, and they can take any other language, is, is real, is, is a suggestion, but is also not a demand that you drop what you've asked, what's in there so far. I think you'll need time to deliberate that, and that is why I'm asking you to at least consider it, and therefore you put this in the, you amend your CIP. And therefore, you put this in the, you amend your CIP, just include this kind of permissive language this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Driscoll. Anyone else in the room for public comment? Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Joseph Abramson, Ballackinwood. I just wanted to speak about the tax ordinance and levy. You know, right now, you know, we have for, I guess it was 10 years or 12 years of no tax increase. But there's also, it's not no spending increase at the same time. So we've continued to increase in spending without increasing the taxes. And what that means is that eventually the reserve fund will decrease, you know, below the minimum amount required by law. Spending keeps going up and up and up. You know, we're going to do bike lanes and everything. It's, you know, going to be expensive. And eventually, you can't, you'll have to pass a budget and you won't be able to say, this has been the 12th year without a tax increase. Because if you don't decrease the spending, but you don't increase the revenue, something won't add up. And while, you know, you don't like to increase taxes, if we don't increase taxes a little bit in maybe five years or so, you're going to have a much larger need for a tax increase. And, you know, I just ran the numbers, you know, on a napkin where the average house, if you take a house of just assessed value at $300,000 and increase it, I think it was like a few percentage points, that would be $20 a year, a year for that type of house, for someone who has a $300,000 house. $20 a year, it's $20 a year, but it's not $100 or $200 a year. And, you know, if you don't do something now, you're going to end up surprising residents with an increase of a $200, $300 tax bill. So while no one likes to raise taxes, I think that's something to think about, especially if you don't consider decreasing spending or reining it in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barely made it here. Adrian Selter, Wynwood. I have a request, and it's probably what you guys are going to do anyway. The redistricting open house, it'll be held on Wednesday. I hope it is similar to like the Ardmore Master Plan open houses, where you have these giant boards of what you're planning to do. And I hope the maps are that big so people can see their neighborhoods and how the lines will affect their neighborhood. So I'm hoping there'll really be some giant maps there in the boardroom on the 4th of January. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room wish to make public comment? Jody, do we have anyone online for public comment?
There is actually no one attending online, other than Commissioners.
We have one. I'm, that leaves me speechless. So we have, we have one comment that's been submitted by email. Phyllis Blumberg from Wynwood, representing Climate Action Lower Marion, expressed concern that funding to support sustainability initiatives is not included in the proposed 2023 budget. And she provided a list of six sustainability priorities. Electrification of all township vehicles and public electric vehicle charging infrastructure, electrification of buildings that use natural gas, banning the use of gas-powered lawn equipment, especially leaf blowers, working to remediate the effects of extreme heat and the loss of biodiversity in the township, protecting the tree canopy, and educating the public about the need to make these transitions and to inform them about federal grants, rebates, and incentives for energy efficiency and electrification. I will, I will take advantage of responding to public comment first. I'll respond to Mr. Abramson because it's probably a useful time to say now rather than something I would have said later, because he has a question that I'm sympathetic to, because it's kind of the argument I made last year, which is, hey, shouldn't we increase taxes a little bit? Because like, you know, spending's going up. So a couple of facts just to keep in mind for this. The first is that you, this year's proposed, you know, funding is going to propose a no-tax millage increase for properties in the township. That doesn't mean revenue is not going, hasn't been going up. Revenue has been going up. It's been going up for two reasons. One is that our commercial tax base keeps increasing. And not our commercial property tax base, but our commercial business. And that has just been growing over time, is an ever larger portion of our revenue. And, you know, when I first moved to Lower Marion, I have a colleague at my day job, who works and lives in another township. He's like, oh, well, you're moving to Lower Marion, that's great. They have a commercial tax base, and therefore your residential tax rates are lower because the businesses in the township, you know, support some of it. And so it doesn't have to be all in the backs of the residents. And that's true. Now, we have a relatively low residential tax rate compared to the market value of our houses because we have other sources of revenue. The other sources of revenue that's been growing over time have been the transfer tax. And that's what has made it so we have had a balanced budget. And even, you know, you're looking forward to the future years. We have a, we have a big budget surplus. We have a bunch of ARP money. And we've had this tax base that is, that has been growing for reasons other than the millage rate, which is what everyone focuses on. And so it doesn't, you know, that's why the default, you know, proposal has been another year of no tax rate increases. It doesn't seem to be necessary in order to, in order to make ends meet this year. If the world goes the way that our CFO predicts, then at some point we will need to, all right? And we've been saying that for a long time. And even, we've been saying it long enough that even I have capitulated to the point where it's like, this is, this is not the year. And, and so, so that's, that's where that is, that's how we've ended up with that. One of the things that insulates us is we have a healthy fund balance. It continues to be healthy despite our best efforts to spend it down some. And also, the bulk of our revenues still come from property tax revenue. And because of, you know, basically, because of the way the funding mechanism works, even in the downturn, that, that does not change very fast, right? So, so our revenue stream is fairly insulated from the underlying economic cycle. And that gets us some safety as well. So, so those are all the things going into, into the calculation this year. And forgive me for taking so much time. It's on the agenda later. I figured this was a useful point to explain that. Any other commissioners which to respond to public comment? Vice President Gafford.
Thank you, President Sinai. I want to respond to Mr. Driscoll's comments, and thank you for those comments. As we talked about during public privilege, we do hear you when you make comments, but we don't always agree. Where I do agree is on your first comment, Mr. Driscoll, about the uncertainty around the property that the school district bought for ancillary fields. It is uncertain. We don't know what's going to happen yet. There's, there's been a lot of discussion about it. And as such, the, the project VIL one is not in the budget, it's in the plan. And we've talked a lot about the difference in the CIP versus next year's budget versus the five-year plan. It is a plan. It is in there as a, I'd say placeholder plus, but it's not locked in stone. And we don't know exactly what, what things will look like. And because we don't know what things will look like, things change every year as we update our CIP from year to year. So whether, you know, we keep it as is, add language, I don't think it really has a practical impact because we don't know what's going to happen. So I would not support kind of updating the CIP at this point. In terms of VIL six, the intersection at Spring Mill and Montgomery, you had mentioned this is 11 properties away from the school. I haven't counted, but I assume you're right. That's really close to the school. And, you know, the, the residents who bought these houses, live in these houses, and had a 1,200-person middle school kind of dropped in their backyard, have, you know, have seen an impact from this and have seen a traffic impact, which includes the impact at that intersection, which is the closest intersection to the school. And I don't think it is inappropriate to have had discussions with the school district where the school district has voluntarily kind of made that contribution of $500,000 to these off-site improvements to that intersection. I think it's a very important intersection. It's a place where there is a bottleneck as traffic comes to and from the school. And having the school district be a partner in that project to alleviate those issues that are kind of enhanced because of that school being there seems entirely appropriate to me. So I, I wouldn't support reconsidering that off-site improvement that was negotiated a long time ago as, as we went through the, the planning process for the school. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Vice President Gavron. Any other commissioners which to respond to public comment?
Ms. Kramer's online.
Yeah, sorry. Commissioner Gillian Kramer, sorry about that.
... appearing remotely. I do agree with Phyllis Blumberg about the need for us to invest in sustainability initiatives. And that is going to cost money. And it's money that this community is going to need to spend to turn ourselves into a truly sustainable community. I do hope that next year, once we have a sustainability plan, we will authorize expenditure of funds for some of these very important initiatives. And I also agree with Mr. Abramson that it's better to have small increases in taxes to close the systemic gap between our revenue and our expenses, instead of waiting and then having to have a big increase at some point in time. And I've had a number of residents who have reached out to me and basically told me that they would much prefer that. I would also note that effectively, a 12-year failure to increase real estate taxes, when you factor in the rate of inflation, yields essentially a 27% tax cut over the last 12 years in real estate taxes to our residents. We have increased costs, and we think we should be adjusting our budget on an annual basis to not have this type of extreme gap. However, I understand that the will of this board is not to have such an increase this year. But I've argued for this for the last two years. Now this is my third year taking the same position on it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Kramer. Anyone else? Commissioner Zeloff.
President Sinai, I'll try and keep this remark, my remark shorter than last time I raised, I made this point. And so perhaps our manager will post a list on our website that's easy to find. This township has done many, many things to improve our sustainability. This township is going to do more. But the suggestion that we need to have it, more funding for sustainability without acknowledging what we've done, just doesn't make sense to me. We have a library with geothermal. We have put significant funds into stream bank restoration. We spent almost $4 million on LED streetlights. We have a sustainability manager. And the county planning commission member who was here for the workshop last week told me that not one of the other 62 municipalities in Montgomery County has a sustainability manager. We are doing many things that other municipalities aren't even thinking about. And again, that doesn't mean we shouldn't do more. And I'm sure that as a result of the sustainability plan that's coming our way and the public discussion of it, we will do many more things. But we have done a great deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners Zeloff. Any other commissioners? Okay, seeing none, that will close public comment. We will turn to the consent calendar. Would anyone like to remove anything from consent? Okay. I will move that we approve the consent calendar, including the items from the earlier Police Committee and Building and Planning Committee meetings. Do I have a second? Thank you, Vice President Gavron. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President, for the adoption of the consent calendar. Mr. Bernhardt. Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Aye.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. McCone.
Yes.
Mr. McKean.
Aye.
Ms. O'Neill.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson. Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Zella.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The consent calendar is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. The, I think we, so, so help me out for a second. So the Building and Planning Committee, the authorization to advertise, is that what we're?
Yes.
Turning to?
Correct.
Okay. So we are now on page 25 of your packet, an authorization to advertise a neighborhood center ordinance. And I will enter this as a motion. I will move that we approve authorizing the Township Secretary to advertise a public hearing and notice of intent to adopt an ordinance to amend the code of the Township of Lower Marion. Chapter 155 entitled zoning, Article four, district-specific standards. Section 155, 4.3, Commercial Center VC and TC Districts, and Article five uses, one, section 155, 5.7, zoning permits to effectively establish and regulate a new Neighborhood Center NC zoning district. Okay. Commissioner Grimes, seconds. Thank you for your second. Do we have a, I guess, Commissioner comment on this?
Yep.
Okay. Any commissioners which may comment?
I think we did quite a bit last time.
I think so. Okay. All those in favor, I guess, please raise your hand. Opposed? Have sentience? Okay. I see one opposed. Next is the authorize, the authorization to advertise the Neighborhood Center map ordinance, which is on page 50 of your packet. Okay, I'll enter that as a motion. I'll move that we approve authorizing the Township Secretary to advertise a public hearing and notice of intent to adopt an ordinance of the Township of Lower Marion. Chapter 155 entitled zoning by the adoption of a zoning map which rezones certain parcels and contained in the Village Center VC zoning district to create a new Neighborhood Center NC district. Do I have a second?
You do.
Okay, Commissioner Bernhardt. Any Commissioner comment? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Have sentience? Okay, there is, there is one opposed. The next item on the agenda is a budget amendment for the Heriton House facility improvement funding on page 65 of your packet. And I will move that we approve the, to amend proposed 2023 budget to allocate additional funding in the amount of up to $60,000 for capital improvement project 4025, facility improvements, to complete a comprehensive preservation plan for Heriton House and Museum for the contribution of one-third of the cost, up to $20,000 from the Heriton Association. Do we have a second? Commissioner O'Neill. Any Commissioner comments on this? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Have sentience? All right, Madam Secretary, that one carries unanimously. Next item on our agenda is on page 66 of your packet, the public hearing and adoption of the ordinance, Chapter 8, 167, fees. So I need to open the public hearing. And this is, this is a ordinance for amending the code of Township Lower Marion, Chapter 8, 167, fees, to provide for the creation of certain fees and the increase in certain fees relating to legal and collection fees and costs incurred in the collection of township accounts. So we will start with public comment. This is the one item that there was no comment before on. This is the point for it. Anyone in the room wishes to make comment on this, please come forward. I see none. Jody, is there still no one online?
Still no one online.
Okay. And there is no written submitted comment, so we'll close the, the public hearing. And I will move for the adoption of ordinance number 4253 to amend the code of the Township of Lower Marion, Chapter 8, 167, fees, to provide for the creation of certain fees and the increase in certain fees relating to legal and collection fees and costs incurred in the collection of township accounts. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held November 16, 2022, and duly advertised in the December 4, 2022 edition of the Mainline Times in suburban. Do I have a second? Thank you, Commissioner McColl. Any, we do have our CFO here, Eric Trav. So any questions for Eric or comments from the board? All right, seeing none. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll for this?
For the adoption of ordinance 4253, Mr. Bernhardt.
I abstain.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. McCone.
Yes.
Mr. McKean.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neill.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Zella.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Mr. McComb.
Yes.
Mr. McCann.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Zella.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We're now on page 70 of your packet, which is an ordinance to amend the code of the township of Lower Merion. You know what, I'm just going to make this as a motion. I will move that we amend the code of the township of Lower Merion, chapter 133, streets and sidewalks. Article three, right-of-way occupancy excavation and use, section 133, 14, performance of work, and section 133, 15, lines and grades, curbs, driveways, drains, and pipes require new work performed within public rights of ways, or right of ways, to be in accordance to the township of Lower Merion site design and construction standards manual. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held November 16, 2022, and duly advertised in the December 4, 2022 edition of Mainline Times in suburban. Do I have a second? Thank you, Vice President Gaver. Any questions for staff or comments from members of the board? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll for this?
For the adoption of ordinance 4254, Mr. Bernheim.
Aye.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Aye.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. McComb.
Yes.
Mr. McCann.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Zella.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We're now on page 70 of your packet, which is an ordinance to amend the code of the township of Lower Merion. You know what, I'm just going to make this as a motion. I will move that we amend the code of the township of Lower Merion, chapter 133, streets and sidewalks. Article three, right-of-way occupancy excavation and use, section 133, 14, performance of work, and section 133, 15, lines and grades, curbs, driveways, drains, and pipes require new work performed within public rights of ways, or right of ways, to be in accordance to the township of Lower Merion site design and construction standards manual. This ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held November 16, 2022, and duly advertised in the December 4, 2022 edition of the Mainline Times in suburban. Do I have a second? Thank you, Vice President Gaver. For those who didn't follow that, this is just the accounting cleanup at the end of the year. Any questions or comments from the, any Commissioners? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll for this.
For the adoption of ordinance 4255, Mr. Bernheim.
Aye.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. McComb.
Yes.
Mr. McCann.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Zella.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good thing, ma'am. So we're now on to page 75 of our packet, which is the 2023 budget tax levy and appropriations. And I will move that we adopt an ordinance imposing a levy for general revenue purposes on all taxable real estate in the township in the amount of 4.19 mils on each $1 of assessed valuation, adopting an annual budget and appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the purposes of the municipal government for the 2023 fiscal year, and approving the 2023 to 2028 capital improvement program. And this ordinance was authorized for advertisement at a stated meeting of the Board of Commissioners held November 16, 2022, and duly advertised in the December 4, 2022 edition of the Mainline Times in suburban. Do I have a second? I will note that this ordinance was a product of really a tremendous year of planning and hard work by staff in this board, and a, a process of really trying to prioritize our priorities. And, and I, I look forward to, to, you know, not only having, you know, this year go by, but also what we're going to accomplish next year. Anyway, any Commissioner questions for staff or comments on this? So we, we are, we are going to devote, Commissioner Gilda Kramer, did you want to?
I just wanted to state that I will be abstaining in as much as the budget contains funding for the tax collector's office, and I am related to the tax collector.
You are the only person I know who can say, you know, I'm related to the tax collector with a smile. That's, that's a, that's a really, that's a really good spot to be in.
Hopefully your kids can too.
That's true. I don't know them. Okay. The, the, with that, Madam Secretary, will you please call the roll for this ordinance?
For the adoption of ordinance 4256, Mr. Bernheim.
Aye.
Mr. Churchill.
Yes.
Mr. Courtney.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Aye.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. G. Kramer.
Abstain.
Mr. McComb.
Yes.
Mr. McCann.
Yes.
Ms. O'Neil.
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson.
Aye.
Mr. Whalen.
Yes.
Mr. Zella.
Aye.
Mr. Sinai.
Yes.
The ordinance is duly adopted.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board?
Yes.
Okay.
If I may. Thank you very much, President Sinai. On a number of occasions, you have referred to the fact that you were a rookie in this position, and you would say, oh, rookie mistake, or rookie whatever. Well, I think in moments, your rookie year would be over. And if we could nominate you for Rookie of the Year, I think we would do so, but someone might recognize there would be no other contestant. So clearly, clearly you would win. But nevertheless, I think it would be remiss not to note, and I, I do so with some, searching for, for the words, but we'll call it, you know, joint pride with everyone on the board. You have done an excellent job this year as president of the board, and we look forward to your leadership, you know, in the, in the second, you know, portion of your term, and thank you very much.
That is very sweet. I thought you were going to say next year, I wouldn't have the rookie excuse. But, but, yeah, like, like, I, I just get out of the way, hopefully, and I'll let you guys do your work. Is there any new business to come before the word? Okay. So, so this is the last meeting of this board in 2022. Thank you, Commissioner Bernheim, for the kind words. Thank you, fellow Commissioners on this board, for really what has been a terrific year and a productive year, and one that has just made me, I'm not going to say happy to say I'm one in this position, but at least, at least fulfilled. And it's, it's due to all the hard work and really the dedication of everyone who's up here, and those, you know, Commissioner Sean Kramer is not here, her as well. Anyway, thank you, it's, it's a terrific team, it will be a terrific team next year, and I look forward to what this board's going to accomplish next year.